Right, good evening everyone. For the purpose of the recording, I'm councillor Stephen Robinson, the leader of Chelmsford City Council. Before the meeting formally starts, I'll summarise, because there's no members of the public present, so you know that the emergency evacuation procedures to leave by the front door, and the rules about filming, but there's nobody here in the gallery. Please put your mobile on silent. Right, so first item is apologies.
Yeah, I've had apologies from councillors Massey, Rayford and Porter.
Thank you.
And councillor Bentley is apologising because he's at a finance meeting.
Okay.
And councillor Davidson, please.
Okay. The usual declarations of interest, either now or as they arise on items of business. Item three, the minutes of the meeting on the 18th of October, can I sign those?
Agreed.
Okay. Public questions, we don't have any, nothing was submitted in advance, so we're moving swiftly on. So now we move to questions from councillors who are not members of the cabinet on matters for which the cabinet is responsible. And the only hand I can see is councillor Knight.
Thank you, I have a question for councillor Davidson referring to the Revenue Monitoring paper.
Will you bring it up after he's presented that report?
If he was to, yes.
No? Okay, so moving on, item six, Connected Chelmsford, item, the Rural England Prosperity Fund, councillor Goldman.
Thank you Chair. Yes, so this is the, as the title says, the Rural England Prosperity Fund, so this is a sum of money which is being granted to the council from central government, in a similar way to the UK Shared Prosperity Fund that you will have heard about previously. It is for slightly different purposes, as the name suggests, and it is a much smaller amount of money, it's in the sum of about £400,000. And, yes, so it's being presented to you as set out in the paper, I assume everyone's read it, so I won't go through it in any further detail, if anyone has any questions, let me know.
I mean, I can't see any problems with it, you're quite right really, and it's nice that there's no sort of long bidding process that we might play around for no reason whatsoever. The scope is wide, isn't it, I mean, there's huge amounts of things it can go to, as it were, do we have any sort of defined ideas of how we're going to use it, or is it a small number of projects, or do you want to spread the jam thinly, I think that was, and how they'll actually vet it, who will vet them?
Yeah, it's a good question. There are restrictions, obviously, the name suggests this has to go to rural parts of the country, so which explains why Chelmsford doesn't get a huge slice of this particular pie, because we're not a particularly rural district. Having said that, we do have areas that we obviously are quite rural, and we would expect that we should be able to spend some of this money in places like Southwood and Ferrars. However, I have been notified just today, actually, that the government has produced a list of areas, towns, and I think they have to be under 30,000 in population, and they've produced a list of areas, and unfortunately, Southwood and Ferrars, and I looked directly at my colleague councillor Roberts over there, Southwood and Ferrars doesn't appear on that list at the moment, so there's something we're going to be taking up directly with government to ask why not, because we think it should fulfil that criteria. And then in terms of how it's being used, what we'd really like to do is to be able to pool this together, working in, we of course need to spend this within the Chelmsford City Council area, within the boundaries of the district, but we think we would be better off working together in collaboration with our partners across the north of Essex, so we've worked very well with the North Essex Economic Board, which is a collaboration of about six different, what is it, six different districts plus Essex County Council, where we have pooled funds in the past and worked together on items. There is a proposal to potentially do that with some, if not all, of these funds as well, which we'd like to do, but of course, all of the districts that are involved in that need to go through their own governance procedures to be able to do that, and that's something that we want to do. We think it, £400,000 for the benefit of the public listening to this, £400,000 I'm sure sounds a lot of money, but actually, in terms of investing in things to be able to help businesses, it doesn't actually stretch very far, whereas if we pool together our resources so that we can come up with grant schemes, for example, that we can administer together, we think we will be more efficient in doing that, and we'll actually be able to provide a better service to the public and to the businesses that hopefully we'll be able to support. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, councillor Highland.
Thank you Chair. So I didn't see any allocation particularly for the likes of Gallywood in the report. Is the, and you talk a little bit more about business than you did community, but I think it's a community fund as well as business, right? So how do we demonstrate the fair split between the wards and business and community?
Yeah, so the criteria will be as set out by government, and we will be constrained by that as to where exactly it can be spent, and it has to be in areas which have a certain population, so I think, I'm just trying to bring up the information, but unfortunately, my outlook is frozen a bit at the moment, let me see if I can bring it up, because I got the definitions earlier, so I just wanted to read them to you, but I'm not sure whether Gallywood will fit into those definitions. Sorry, my computer's on a bit of a go slow, let me see if I can bring it up here as well, but I know that, so the reason I mention Southwood and Ferrars is because, let me see if I've got it here, yeah, so towns, villages and hamlets with populations below 10,000, that's, so this is paragraph 4.2 of the report, it's noted that as far as the Rural England Prosperity Fund is concerned, rural areas are defined as towns, villages and hamlets with populations below 10,000, or market or hub towns with populations of up to 30,000 that serve their surrounding rural areas as centres of employment and in providing services. So we need, we are constrained to be able to spend it within those areas, and within that, we expect that we will be putting together some kind of grant scheme where people will apply for the grants to make sure that, and then we need to make sure that they fulfil the criteria for the grants, but we don't know what those criteria are yet, so we're very much in the early days of making sure that, of putting together those, the criteria that people will apply, and so I can't give you any more information than that, I'm afraid, because we don't know ourselves at the moment, but we will be following the guidance set out by government.
Yeah, councillor Roberts.
I'm pleased to see that you are thinking about Southwood and Ferrars being in the rural area, I think the whole of the parish, probably about 80% of it is going to be built on in about four years' time, so that won't be very rural. And also, of course, Southwood and Ferrars has got considerably more population than 10,000 at the moment, I think the electorate's something like 14,000 from memory, I haven't counted it recently, I'm leaving that till next April, but the, I'm pleased to say they are going to do it, but I think perhaps you ought to consider Maldon, because Maldon District is very, very rural, indeed, compared with some of the North Essex things, and I think Maldon linked with Southwood and Ferrars, there's been talk, you know, the historic museum is somewhere in that area, because there's a lot of history stuff of Southwood and the area, back in the Denji, and it's all going to get thrown away because there's nowhere to keep it, so that sort of thing needs to be, I think, considered. But Maldon is very rural, probably more rural than Chelmsford is as a whole. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Roberts, and of course, Maldon being a completely separate district to Chelmsford District, so we have, we've been given the grant to be spent within the Chelmsford District, so Maldon will have their own grant as well, but Maldon are part of the North Essex Economic Board, so we do work in partnership with them on that, so if they agree to pool their resources with us as part of the North Essex Economic Board, then that's obviously a possibility that they could bid for those, that organisations could bid for those funds when the grants are made available.
Yeah, councillor Sizeme.
Thank you, thank you. Yes, councillor Roberts referred to the 10,000 population, but the rules for the grant say that if it's a hub that provides services to a rural area, it can go up to 30,000, and Southwood would qualify on that basis.
Yes, thank you very much councillor Sizeme, actually, I meant to say that when councillor Roberts mentioned it, yes, thank you very much for pointing that, you're absolutely correct, a hub is up to 30,000 in population, thank you, which is why we're surprised actually that Southwood and Ferrars was not included in the list.
Right, any, I don't think there are any more questions, so is that report agreed?
Agreed.
Right, thank you. So moving on to item seven, three items under seven, first one is Treasury Management, councillor Davidson.
Yes, evening, thank you. Treasury Management, I'm not going to say much in introducing this, this is a technical paper, it gives an update every year at this time on the Treasury Management activity, Treasury Management, as the majority, at least of you on that side know, because you were at the meeting in October that unfortunately I had to miss, Treasury Management is how we manage the cash that we're holding in order to get the best return for the council. There's a paper, officers are doing an excellent job, is the summary of it, and we are asked to recommend the paper to council, so I'll say no more than that and see whether you wish to ask any questions. Okay, in that case?
Councillor Roberts has a question.
Oh, sorry. I did sort of free one, I got the draft of this the day after the Bank of England put up the interest rate, and of course, the numbers in here are not quite the same as they would be now, does this get updated as a result of that, or do we just wait, because it's lovely to go, again, I appreciate that, but obviously, the figures are 0.75% out in some cases, so it makes it difficult, I know, but it's just a question beneath answering, because we make a difference in the amount of money we got, I suspect.
Yeah, I did check that the answer I gave you informally was the right one, we're not slavishly following the current interest rate, the figures for, the figures in here, this is of course a mid-year review, rather than a forecast of next year, which is what we will be coming to in this chamber in the next few months, but I don't know whether Phil wants to expand, but essentially, it's that this is looking at the trend in interest rates and not the specific spot rate, so the spot rate can change, but we're focused on the trend.
If I may, councillor Davidson, you're absolutely right, this is a backward-looking report about what we've done, in terms of going forward, there have been some changes in interest rates that will more affect next year's budget, the assumptions we've made about this year already factor in a lot of the changes in interest rates that have occurred, if anything, interest rates are slightly softer than we expected, so it's one of these things at the moment, we're still taking a judgement as part of the budget process as to what's going to happen next year, but the advice is obviously we'll learn more than we would have done, so.
Thank you. Councillor Highland.
Thank you. On page, actually, just above 2.2 paragraph, there's those two little boxes with last year's and this year's allocations to the pots, you put 17 million into 100 days to one, is there a sort of like calculation that goes into how much you put into the longer held cash than the shorter?
If councillor Davidson's happy, I can answer that.
I was going to say, if you'd like to answer that, thank you.
To be honest, there's an element of judgement, because it depends on the future direction of interest rates, so if we don't expect rates to go up, there's not much point in being long, if rates are going up, and we can take advantage of it at the moment, there's an advantage of putting funds out for longer, so there's a load of judgements involved, plus in terms of need of cash, so that's part of it.
Right, no other questions? So is that report agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. So moving on to 7.2, the Revenue Monitoring.
Yeah, councillor Knight has a question, I think the summary of the report is, last year I said that we were facing a gap this year between our income and our expenditure of possibly up to two and a half million pounds, this report provides the details, and in a sense, it's relatively good news, in that the gap between what this discloses we're now expecting for this year, and what we were budgeting, is 2.1 million, that's mainly because business rates are looking positive, and officers are now able to forecast that we'll retain more business rates than was previously expected. The monitoring shows three things though, are damaging our finances, as I said last month, we've asked our staff to accept a pay award that's far below the rate of inflation for many of them, but it will still cost one and a half million pounds more than we budgeted. Inflation has driven up our other costs, particularly energy and fuel, we already budgeted for that, but the report, this report adds another half million to the impact of inflation on those costs, and our car parking income is not recovering at the rate that we'd budgeted and hoped, so we're now predicting a shortfall there, in this report of 1.3 million. So that clearly is going to damage our, or weaken at least our reserves, reserves are the financial muscle that we need to withstand shocks like the current economic chaos, the mistakes the government has made in handling the economy, as a number of us have mentioned. So, subject to questions, I'll say no more in introducing it.
Councillor Knight.
Yes, you've answered a lot of my questions, but not the one that's the key one for me. So you put your hand down the back of the sofa and you found two million pounds, well done, I mean, you know, that's, I applaud you for that, first of all for looking, and secondly for finding, and everybody deserves a bit of luck, so, you know, well done on that, perhaps you can pass some on to the government for Thursday, they need it. So it gives you some help towards what you might call your structural deficit for next year, not all of it, but quite a lot of it, so that, you know, helps you in that particular regard, but you also say in your statement that it's not guaranteed, it could be more, but equally it could be less, so here comes the question. I know that if Phil was handling the money, that he would be carefully husbanding it for, the two million pounds I'm speaking about, for at least a week, and counting it every day to make sure it was absolutely guaranteed before he put it in the numbers, but politicians, that's all politicians, do have a way of being enthusiastic with the numbers, so I was going to use the word gerrymandering, but I'm not allowed to use that, so what I will say is, is there any political influence in the way that's been brought out of the hat, so to speak, to enable the current situation and your forecast, presumably for 23, 24, to have improved?
Well, I confess I'm slightly disappointed at the question, because it implies that you're doubting the professionalism of our section 151 officer, which I don't think we should be doubting, I let Phil answer the question, but my answer is, I haven't looked down the back of any sofa, what I do is rely on Phil, and the problem with business rates is, it's always very difficult to predict where it's going to end up, and what we need to do is have best judgement at any one point as to what we're forecasting, Phil has looked down the back of the sofa, as you put it, Phil is now forecasting, because he has more confidence that we're going to be able to retain more of the business rates than we thought at the start of the year, so, but Phil, do you want to expand on that?
Yes, certainly, the way that business rates works is it's very difficult to actually predict, the scheme is massively complicated, overly complicated in terms of how it's been set up, it relies on previous year's figures and forward-looking to arrive at the estimate for this year, and what we do is, we tend to do it on a quarterly basis, so in a way, we'd already identified earlier in the summer that we thought we'd have a million of it, and that's what it allowed for in the MTF SA, the Medium Term Financial Strategy, the additional millions come about because we've done some more monitoring, and it could be that there is more money on the table when we get to year end, but I'm not confident enough to put all of it in, and the trouble with the business rates, as I say, is it's very difficult, because we're all in a pool as well, with other Essex authorities, and we're reliant on the data they submit, so there's an element as well of judgement about whether I can rely on my colleagues to get it right, because it's really difficult to predict. So what I think in terms of, are we certain of it, we're more certain of it this year, I'd say next year is where I wouldn't expect a similar level of income, it will definitely be lower next year than it is in the current year, so I hope that helps.
It does, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No? Is that report agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you. So moving on to the capital monitoring.
Yeah, the, sorry, bear with me, the capital report is the third of the standard reports that we bring at this time of year, and this one has little new in it, I have to say, either on the main capital programme itself or on asset replacements, I think the key messages from the report are that we've withdrawn from the strategic property purchase, as I think you knew, the reason for that is unfortunately, the increases in interest rates make that sort of a purchase more expensive than it was before interest rates went up, inflation has made it less affordable, so the balance now is that that is one of the things that we have to stop doing in order to maintain control over the finances, and as I keep saying, we are determined to ensure that we practise sound finance, recognising that that's a continuation of what the previous administration under councillor Gally did, so I think there's a cross-party interest in continuing that. The other message is, overall, we are reducing the capital budget and reprofiling the spend, and that is about ensuring that we can afford the capital programme that we're progressing. There is a reference in the paper to a 1.1 million pound addition under urgency powers, which has been completed, so that leaves the numbers here, we just need to approve the small increases in free capital schemes, several new items and cost increases of relatively small amounts in the asset replacement programme, and the re-phasing of one million pounds of the asset replacement programme from the current year into next year. And unless you have any questions?
Yeah, no, councillor Sizeme.
Yes, thank you Chairman, two questions, the first one relates to the scheme number 47, the public realm Tyndall Square scheme, that an application for funding has been made to SELEP, I think it's recognised you might get everything that you've applied for, but it's also possible that you might not qualify at all, so do you have any, do you recognise this possibility, and do you have any contingency plans?
Yes, we have contingency plans, but let me hand over to councillor Goldman.
Thank you councillor Davidson, thank you for the question councillor Sizeme, yes, as the council's representative on Success Essex Board, which is one of the federated boards of SELEP, I feel probably the best qualified to answer this question, so you're absolutely right that we did ask for some additional funds from SELEP for the Tyndall Square project, and this was to come out of the Getting Building Fund, which was what originally we got some funds from SELEP from, and there were some additional funds which had been released from the Getting Building Fund because of other projects elsewhere in other parts of the SELEP region that had not been able to progress in the predicted manner, so that released additional funds, and we did bid for some extra funds for Tyndall Square. There were other projects which, at the time when the Success Essex Board prioritised its request to SELEP, that's, so we prioritised, the Success Essex Board prioritised three projects, and then SELEP looked at all the projects across all of the regions that it covers, and then prioritised those projects accordingly, and there was some extra information which came forward from some other projects, which meant that they were then potentially prioritised slightly higher than Tyndall Square, however, we looked, we were asked to look again at our prioritisation for those, for the projects that we'd put forward, and it was agreed that we would reduce our bid across all three of the projects that Success Essex had asked for funding for, so that all of those projects could be funded from the available money from the Getting Building Fund, so that's a very long way of saying that we are now very confident that we will be getting the money that we've asked for, although it wasn't, it's not completely the original amount that we asked for, it is actually quite close to that, and we've had indication from SELEP that that will be going forward, so we're very confident that we are getting those funds.
Thank you. My second question relates to 645, the theatre modernisation, I was surprised by the previously reported history, which refers to the budget being approved in February 2021, and talks about that there's, the figures were only estimates and they could change, however, at an extraordinary council meeting on the 22nd of March, another report was presented which says, and I quote, "The cost of the project previously reported to members has been estimates, and it had been made clear that they were expected to increase, now that tenders have been received, accurate capital costs could be rewarded, and as this was a fixed price contract, they were not expected to increase." It seems everything we've seen since contradicts that report.
I don't really know what to say about this one, I mean, it is as set out in the paper, it is factually correct to say that the first time that we were able to give predicted, accurate predicted costs for the project was in March of this year, because that was the first time that we'd received tenders from any contractors who would be doing the work, that's why we asked for the money that we did in March, which was 2.75 million, it became apparent as the project progressed, as is often the case with projects, as we have been through many times, that there were additional costs because of unforeseen problems, which have been explained at great length to this council, and that's why we asked for additional funds and were granted last month, so the project is now at 3.25 million, and that's factually where we are.
Yes, I hear what you're saying, we look forward to discussing this further at the ONS meeting.
Yes, so do I, I think that's actually, just for the benefit of the public that may be watching, I understand that the Conservative group would like to bring their theatre project to overview and scrutiny, which is exactly the right place for scrutiny of these sorts of projects, so I very much welcome that as the cabinet member, I think that's exactly the right use of process, so thank you very much.
Okay, any other questions?
I'm tempted to respond that Hampshire and Kent are the...
Sorry, councillor Highland has got the question now.
Thank you, yeah, just 6.42, the Chelmsford Flood Resilience Programme, that grant payment of 103,000, does that come back to us, or does it stay with EA?
Phil Reeves, please.
Yeah, Phil. It's effectively section 106 money that we've received, and we're paying it over to them because it can count towards the spend on the project, so they have it there if further works are undertaken, if not, it will have to come back to the council and probably be returned to the developer, because it's section 106.
So returned to developer because it's run out of time?
Yes.
In EA's hands?
Not in their hands, we've handed it on for them to undertake the works, be they designer, whatever, and if there isn't sufficient works, then it will return to us and we'll have And if there isn't sufficient works, then it will return to us, and we'll have to return it, because there are time limits on Section 106. Some of these, Section 106 can have like a 10-year lifespan, some of them can have two years. So, it comes back to each agreement's different, and we look and we make sure that they're spent in time.
So, we've actually allowed it to run out of time, regardless of whose hands it's in?
If, the Environment Agency was the people who reassessed the scheme and wanted to take a different scheme. So, that is the reason why the receipt wasn't spent on that batch, not in that time. So, basically, if we didn't hand it over to the EA, we'd have to return it to the developer immediately. They can put it to good use. It's better that the public benefits from it.
Thank you.
I think it's fair to say that councillor Whitehead before me, and we've been, over the last 10 years, we've been chasing the Environment Agency to spend the money that we've been holding in our capital programme, and we've just been waiting for them to get their act together, frankly. Right. Any other questions? No? Okay. Is that report agreed?
Agreed.
Well, we're moving swiftly on. I don't think there's any urgent business, and the reports to council are these three? The Treasury one. And, well, that brings us to an end this evening, exactly half an hour. Thank you for your attendance.